I'd like to welcome everyone to council meeting this evening. All council members, except Councilman Jensen, are present. I understand he might be with us a little later. At this time, we've asked David Larson to lead us in a pledge, after which Lynn Walker will give us opening remarks.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, and we come before thee tonight at the beginning of this city council meeting with thankfulness in our hearts for the many things. Father, we would ask if thou will be with us this evening as we do the work of the city, that we might be wise in our decisions, and that we might be always careful to listen to everybody's thoughts and ideas. May be civil in how we handle things, and thankful again for everything that we have, this wonderful city, the opportunity we have of serving, and we say these things in neighbor treaties.
Ben, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, never not.
Counsel, any changes? Okay, entertain a motion on the agenda. Mayor, counsel, I'll make the motion that we approve. The agenda is written.
Second?
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, now we'll have an open session. If there's an item that's not a public hearing, or it's something you want to discuss that's not on the agenda, please come up and state your name, and you'll have about three minutes. So, all the scouts. No? Hi.
Hello, my name is Andra Erickson. I live on 900 South in Pleasant Grove, and I would like to come and talk to you guys today because I'm, number one, grateful for the road that is being repaved. It's been a not-so-painful process, which is good, but as I've lived there for the last five years, there's been, our street is worried about the amount of, not necessarily traffic, but how fast the traffic goes down that road. A couple of years ago, we did have the city bring the speed limit sign, the digital speed limit sign, and that seemed to help until the sign was gone. And then the speeding happened again, and we've called a couple of times. Several citizens have had taken pictures of license plates, and the police have tracked those individuals down, but it was bad when there were potholes. And now that there's been a timeframe where the digging has stopped happening, and now it's just a dirt road, it's gotten worse. And now, right? Right? I know. And we're just nervous that it's going to be a Speedway once it gets paved. So I would like the city council members, the Public Works, and the Police Department to work with us as citizens to make a plan as to how we can make that road safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just so you know, we've already talked about that in our meeting today. Once there's a nice, smooth road by the end of this week, we agree that we need to just keep an eye on things. So Marty and Chief Smith have talked about some of the measures, whether it's a little bit of extra patrol, or having the trailer out there to help monitor that. Those were some of the things that we were going to do the end of this week and next week, so.
Okay.
And if, sorry, Ms. Erickson?
Andra?
Andra.
If she wants to-
Andra or Andra?
It's Andra.
Andra?
It doesn't matter.
Respond.
Yeah, respond to anything.
We would love to have a community dialogue, so if you would like to meet with Chief Smith-
Perfect.
And talk through that, we can make sure we're all-
Yeah, I mean, as citizens, I've talked to lots of the neighbors on the road, and we'd like to know what you guys would like us to do. Do you want us just to call every time we see somebody speeding? Would you like us to try to get the license plate and make of the model? You know, what do you want us to do? Because it truly is a problem. And whether there be a road, I don't know what that's called, survey of how fast the road, people are going on the road, so that you guys know for sure what's happening. But, thank you.
Chief Smith, we'll start that dialogue with you, so we're communicating.
We can talk through that, and we can do a survey. My suggestion would be, let's, how it goes, we'll do some enforcement right up front, like we've talked about, reminders that this is the speed limit, and then we'll let the traffic kite, and see what it's going to do, and maybe do some-
Okay. And there's only one speed limit sign on our road. It's when you're going, heading west. There's not one when you're heading east, and it happens, not just going down the road, it happens going up the road as well. So, just FYI.
Thank you. Okay.
So, Chief Smith, will you just be in contact, or Scott, you will with Andra, they set that up?
Chief will.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
I'll call ya.
911.
Yeah. No, I have the right number, I promise. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak to the council, and specifically, since there's five of the candidates for city offices in this room, is where I'm directing my remarks to. Now, as, you know, our city has been kind of overrun with, I call it, political sign pollution. And as you all well know, I was the last one to get in the game on that, but I want to make a statement that I'll be the first one to get out. Starting on the 7th, I'll be taking down my signs, and they'll all be gone by the 8th, and I encourage all of you that we have them all gone by the 8th or the 9th, so we don't have them hanging around for a month later. So that's, so I'll be the first one. So, thank you.
Bye.
Love the shirt, by the way.
Okay, we'll close the open session. We have a number of consent items. Are there any discussions? Questions?
We have a couple of quick questions. I had a question from the public that maybe Tina, maybe she stepped out.
Yeah, she's meeting with the scout.
Okay, maybe Denise could speak to this question. I had a question about the rent payment for our temporary housing for firefighters, that that amount is being paid according to our invoice here from our impact fees for public safety. And I just had the question asked of me from the public whether that was appropriate, or whether we should be using impact fees on something other than new construction like a lease, and if we shouldn't be spending some of our other monies, our bond monies, or something else on the lease, so that we could spend all the impact money on the new construction.
Yeah, we had talked about that, and we probably need to follow up with Tina. If for some reason we can't use those fees, we'll just switch it to a different account and take it, I mean, take it out of the budget, per se.
We could take it out of the account for the bond proceeds. So the only two accounts we have right now. And so I think Scott and I talked about using all the impact fees, because they do qualify because it is new construction for growth, you know, stuff like that. So we were going to use all those and then go to the bond proceed money.
Yeah, I just, I just had the question asked of me whether we were on good legal footing to use the bond, or to use the impact fees for the lease specifically. I mean, I think nobody questions on engineers, on architects, and on construction, but on a temporary lease.
No, it's a good question. We'll double-check it, and if we can't, we'll just make the general entry adjustment to account for that.
Awesome, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items.
We have a motion by Sid and a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, we have no board commissioning members to appoint tonight. Presentations. We're on 9A. This is a public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance 2017-41, amending the city code chapters 10-19-9, freestanding signs, and chapter 10-19-14, prohibited signs, by increasing the maximum allowed area and height for freestanding signs on properties adjacent to I-15 highway, and revising the provisions regarding prohibited signs and various zoning requirements regulating signs in the Grove Zone Interchange Subdistrict. Daniel?
Mayor, counsel, thank you so much for letting me be here today. I want everyone to understand what I'm about to say, so I'll try to be, speak as slow as possible. Sometimes when I get excited or nervous, I start speaking really fast, but I have Kathy that's going to help me out with that. But please stop me if I'm not making sense of myself. So, Mayor, counsel, yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for ASEA, for the ASEA building. What a great building. That was one of the first projects that I had the opportunity to get from the front counter.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. I just got a message from someone there, wondering if the livestream is on tonight, because it's not working.
I'll check it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Daniel, I just want to make sure that's on for the public.
It's okay.
That was to slow down.
Thank you. So I had the chance to attend this ceremony. So also, I was listening to the presenters, there's this idea that is becoming common knowledge among us, and that's the idea, or the concept, that at this point right now, we are seeing a shift, a slight shift in development, coming from the point of the mountain toward more central areas in Utah County. Fortunately for us, Pleasant Grove City is right there in the center, so if we can say it, so to speak, that PG is right in the middle, Pleasant Grove is right in the middle of this new commercial hub, if I may say so.
And isn't it about time?
Yeah. So, it is about time, but it's also impressive for me to see how Pleasant Grove has prepared itself to accept that change. So we have created here in Pleasant Grove certain areas and certain zones that prepares to accept those changes, to accept those developments. PG has the area of the Grove where we have seen multiple developments lately, and it's a very special area for us in terms of economics. But even more special, we have a subdistrict that is called the Interchange Subdistrict. That, to me, and I will say this, I don't even know if I make sense, but I will say that the Interchange Subdistrict is the jewel of the crown of Pleasant Grove. Every time I get an application for, or an idea proposed to me that is going to go around this area, I always like to go to the, to read the purpose, the purpose that is written in an ordinance in regards to the Interchange Subdistrict. So the purpose that we have right there was to promote the development of regional center, so we were shooting high, we were preparing ourselves for that. So we were promoting, we created this area to promote the development of a regional center for retail, hotel, convention, and professional offices, with the highest standards for architecture and design, and site design. So we were getting ready for that. Now, what makes this area special, it's that it has frontage to I-15, the visibility. Now, Pleasant Grove is different to a lot of the other cities along the Wasatch Front. I'm pretty sure we know this, but I'll make emphasis that, in the way that the development happened along the Wasatch Front was kind of like sausage links. You've got one city, you have a frontage on the freeway, and you've got another city, you've got a frontage on the city, and so on. Pleasant Grove is limited on that resource. We only have from right here, from the beginning of Pleasant Grove till right here, is only .77 of a mile. So there are limited resources and visibility from the freeway. If eventually this portion incorporates into Pleasant Grove, they will have almost exactly a mile. So we have certain developers, not many, but some developers, that own land around here. We, in the process that, when we were creating this zone, I don't know if you guys remember, I'm pretty sure you guys do remember, it's me the one who forgets, but about like two months ago, we even came up with this rule, the 50/50 rule. Pretty much what we were saying is that we want 50% of the development in this area to be retail. So that's the goal, or what we were shooting for, what we still are shooting for, more than retail, sorry, we were shooting for sales tax generating uses. Now, the market is very competitive. We have American Fork on one side. I don't see them as enemies, actually friends, but the market is competitive, and we're competing against American Fork, we're competing against Linden, we're competing against North Orem, so we're competing with those guys. The majority of these cities already have ordinance in regards to the signs along the freeway. For sales tax generating uses, visibility and signs is vital, is vital. So the applicant came to us and then expressed the idea of coming with a sign for the development occurring right here. First, when I'm about to write code, I always like to see what we have at this point, and then go from there. As I was reading the code that we have right now, I realized three points. We'll come back to those images. So I realized three points. Point number one, or ordinance right now has kind of like a correlation on the square footage of a development and the area of the sign that you can get. For example, if you have less than five acres in a development, your sign can be 235 in height. If you go a little higher, and you have more land, more land to develop, then the number goes high, and so on, and so on. Right? So we can see there's a correlation right there. Number two that I found out is that if the ordinance says that if the development is part of a master plan project area, similar to what we're seeing right now, then the overall project area may be used for the terminant sign area, but it doesn't tell us how much or where. It leaves it completely open, and that, to me, is not very clear. Number three that we have right now in our ordinance, sorry, and it's not there, is that under a conditional use, you can increase the sign area of a sign, you can increase the area of a sign, but it doesn't tell us to where, to how much. So what I was trying to find out, to make the code clear, but also to find a cap on the square footage of the area of the sign area, that, you know, one of the biggest principles of planning is don't be capricious, so I tried to find some points of reference with different cities. So we drove around, and then we found some similarities in what is going to be proposed to the city eventually, but, for example, this is the sign, freestanding sign in Lehigh. That's the new medical center, is on the east side of the road. If you guys see this, the height of this sign is 65 feet, and the area is about 1,000. So that's what a 65-feet-tall and 1,000-square-foot area of a sign looks like. Now, there's something to look at this sign, there's something specific to look at this, is that the grade of the freeway is lower toward the sign is. So in reality, this sign seems bigger, or is easier to see for the driver, because it's at a higher point level. Okay, so there's a difference in grade right there.
Did you take that picture while you were driving?
Ah, no.
No.
No, but I'll tell you what I did later. This is actually what I think was-
Don't admit anything.
Yeah, don't admit anything, sorry. No, this is Google Earth, this is Google Earth. I did take this picture, though. So that's just to find a point of comparison. This is pretty similar, we realize. Now, if we go to the next one.
Daniel, when you say 1,000 square feet of signage, you mean all three of those panels combined?
Yes. So the way we calculate the area of a sign, in this case, would be from right here and just that area right there, everything that is part of advertisement, so we don't count the frame.
Got it.
My computer has a tendency to freeze. Here we go. Now, I'm pretty sure you guys are aware of that. That's the Tinsgiving Point Megaplex sign. That one is actually on the west of the freeway. This one is lower than the plane of the freeway. The height is 77 feet, but the area is 1222, pretty similar to the cap that the staff is proposing. Just to keep in mind, let me go back to this. There you go. So at the end, this is what staff is proposing, sorry. Staff got together with the applicant, and this is what we're proposing as a cap for signs. 1,200 for square feet and 85 feet tall. Now with that, we can go actually to the comparisons. There we go. So the sign that we are proposing, or the limit in area, will be similar to this, and 10 feet, ah, no, it's like 8 feet taller than that, it's pretty similar to that. That one, whoa, that one's quite the sign, that's the outlets. That one is 100 feet, way taller, for 1,000 square feet, double the size, more than double, more than double the size. This sign, just to keep in mind something, it's, to keep something in mind, is that that's the sign that even got to the Senate, and the Senate wanted to build. It was Bill 161 that allows signs that big along the freeway, for something that, but is also considered onsite advertisement. So all this type of signs are not considered billboards, they're onsite advertisement. And finally, I have the one from American Fork. That one's exactly 85 feet tall, and in square footage for advertisement is bigger than what the applicant and staff is proposing. Okay? So going back to the image, let me see. This image, and I was a little hesitant to show it to you, but the reason why I bring it is not because we are proving at this point this sign, but that's just to give us an idea of what the sign is going to look. And that one is also to give us an idea of the location, but it doesn't mean that it will be exactly located right there. We still need to go through a building permit, engineer needs to take a look at it, and UDOT needs to take a look at that as well. Okay? But that gives us an idea of what it's going to look. The sign, or what we're going to calculate into the advertisement square footage for the area is going to be this area right here. This is an electronic message, this area advertises Valley Grove and San Joe's Properties right here. Adding this part, these three areas, it gives us about 1,100, but we decided to go to 12. Let's keep in mind also that these ordinance not only affect Valley Grove, but also is for future development that may go along this freeway. I don't know if BMW eventually will come up with their own sign, and once this property incorporates to the city, then they have the option to do that as well. So that will be for the entire area.
Also affect 1, 2, and 3?
Correct. So that's the, this, thanks for bringing that up, Mayor. So there's a concept on the, on the bill that was passed on the Senate, the concept is called, let me see, I don't want to use the wrong word, Unified Commercial Development. Pretty much what that says is that if the property who develops this land is also the property owner of 1, 2, and 3, in this case, if you ended up having a Mexican restaurant placed in this corner right there-
I'm raising with ya.
If you have it in that corner right there, you could have advertisement right here, and that will be considered onsite advertisement, because, number 1, 2, and 3 are part of this unified development area. So that's something that the people of Travis Mountain do for us. And I talk to people of UDOT, and there's certain hoops that they need to do with UDOT, and they may need to get a waiver or something like that, apply for that unified development status, but that's something that the applicant will have to do. But yes, that includes 1, 2, and 3.
So-
I want to use your microphone.
Oh. There a distance requirement or from the freeway, like it can't go more than 100 feet or 200 feet from the freeway?
Yes. So staff is proposing to be 100 feet, yeah, within 100 feet. UDOT has jurisdiction 660 feet each side, each side from the right-of-way. So if a sign comes to us, we can approve it based on this, but they still have to go to UDOT and get their approval from them as well.
Wouldn't want to.
So that's the dimensions that they have. Does that answer your question?
But on their property?
That bill treats it all like one?
Correct, correct.
Not UDOT property, but the developer property?
Yes. They, so they want to make, just they want to make sure that there's not offsite advertisement, or that this is not going to qualify as a billboard. Okay? So some of the, so I already showed you the, I'm going to go back now to the proposed changes from staff. There we go. So, like I mentioned before, the ordinance allowed to increase the area of the sign as long as you will get a conditional use. Staff doesn't like that, because we already mentioned the situation with conditional uses. So what we decide to do is make them permitted under this development standards. So number one is that, well, this is what comes right after. Applicant seeking the approval of a sign on private property along I-15 freeway within 100 feet from the edge of a controlled highway right-of-way, show me the following criteria. And then we have these three criterias. Number one, the sign must only contain advertisement for multiple tenants within the same project area or the unified commercial development. This will create a little bit of confusion, so Planning Commission recommend to eliminate the project area and just leave the unified commercial development. What I meant for this to be a synonym, but let's just leave what State has decided, the unified commercial development. Letter B, the sign cannot significantly block or impair the vision of buildings, aesthetic or artistic features, or other future signage of the same type. Staff, well, this is the part that I'm a little nervous about. Staff just drove through that and run through the freeway for a little bit, and just making sure to go northbound that the sign wouldn't block BMW. So we did that, we even took video, and we measured, and in no way, shape, or form, this sign would block any part of the view of the BMW building, so we make sure that happened. And finally, these signs are very expensive, so if you're going to pay that much, might as well come with an automatically system to adjust the brightness, and that's very common. Other jurisdictions have that, that's just for drivers not to be so bright of them, or that we can see the sign from the G-Mountain. So they should come with a system to adjust the brightness during the day and during the night, and they should not exceed .3-foot candles above the ambient light. Again, that's pretty common standards on the new signs. It looks like the future is already here, most of the science applications that we're getting are for electronic signs, so we are right there. Finally, here's the, what we got, you can see that the BMW building is right here, in no way it will block it, and that's going northbound, going southbound. This is approximately, but also it will not block. Okay? So that's what staff has prepared. In the motion, in the motion, I would like if whoever says the motion to add a little bit to it. So in the part that it says, let me see, that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met, if we can add that, that UDOT requirements as well. So it will be something like, all final planning, fire department, and UDOT requirements are met. That's what I have, Mayor.
It's a public hearing, so we're going to open it up for questions from the public. Daniel, feel free, if you have anything to say, if anybody else would like to ask questions on this, please come up at this time and state your name.
Jay Meacham, sixteen-seventy Cherokee. Question I've got, Daniel showed a couple of photos. One was for Traverse Mountain, which is a big sign. It was intended for I-15 traveling public. Meadows sign that he showed was for Meadows, more for onsite. I guess the question I've got is, this area includes the interchange, which is elevated. And I wondered if it was the same code or criteria for adjacent to the freeway versus, say, the intersection of North County Boulevard and Pleasant Grove Boulevard?
Can you answer that? Do you understand the question?
Well, you showed two different types of signs, from my perspective, or from my opinion. One is for the traveling public on the freeway. One is for local roads. The height of the sign is gonna be different in its relative location to the I-15. Because of the elevation of the interchange. So I guess I'm asking, is it the same criteria? And where would the signs be located? In my opinion, you don't, you don't want the same type of sign adjacent to I-15 as you do away from I-15. And wondered if the height should be based upon the traveling public elevation intent? If, if, if that makes sense.
The question relative to this particular discussion is, within the hundred feet of I-15, should that sign be higher or lower because of the elevation of the freeway?
Exactly.
Okay. You wanna address that?
Sorry it took me a little bit to get a question, but I clearly see what he's saying. Please correct me if I'm wrong again. Yes, for, for this, that sign, like you said, it was meant to be for the freeway. That one, there's a local road goes right here along the freeway, and then you got the freeway right here. This was discussed with the applicant. We filtered this together. That was a number that he proposed, and that's, well, he proposed something else, and then we kinda met in the middle with staff. I just got those signs for comparison, and just to make sure that we are competitive enough. I know that this sign was meant to be for, for this road, but you can also see it from the freeway. Actually, I'm pretty sure most of the people see it from the freeway, that, that sign. Yes, sure, there's another local road right there, and you can see it better right there. The, the elevation that we have for this interchange is about thirty-five feet. And the gap or the change in grade to where the sign is gonna be from the freeway is ten feet. So that, obviously, the applicant did his research, his market research, see where he would like to be, and I don't see any problem with allowing to that, to that proposed height.
Does that height work for the other properties along the freeway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. No, we, we don't, we haven't set a, a place yet. This is just a court amendment, but it's not a, yeah, for a specific sign.
Just as a point of reference, do you have a sense of how far that Thanksgiving Point sign is from the freeway? Is that within a hundred feet of the freeway?
Five-lane road?
Yeah, no, that, that would be a little further, I will say. I didn't have a measurement, but.
What's, what's the cross-section for something, the easement for a road like that?
Marty, I hope you can help it. I think it'll be a little further than a hundred feet, yeah.
Go to the Meadows slider. That's, that's even higher. That's not a freeway, visible.
It is.
It's on the freeway.
It's visible from the freeway.
All, all these pictures is for, is the freeway. All those pictures were taken from the freeway. So this is the freeway, and you can see the sign right there. But there, there's still a road right there.
I, I, I guess my concern is, are we doing this for the freeway or for? Should there be something different in proximity to I-15 versus the local?
In, in this case, we're doing it for the freeway. I think it would be really hard for us to eventually put a local road on the side of the fre, let me go back to the site plan, but that will help us a little bit.
Right, so what you're saying is it's different for my, in proximity to I-15 than it is for?
Sure.
Local roads.
Marty, is, is there any future road plan for this area right here?
Oh, yes, but it's, it's gonna be a UDOT road.
Sorry, can I just break in for a second?
For sure.
I think the question that Mr. Meacham is asking is, the way the code is currently being drafted, we have this new height and size qualification for anything within one hundred feet of I-15. So the question is, as staff, are you comfortable, have you looked at a hundred feet from I-15, and are you comfortable allowing a sign that size anywhere within that, that drive zone? Right? If you are, then it's been drafted the way, that answers his question. If, if there's some local road that's within that hundred feet that assign this size and height would be inappropriate, that's his question. Have we considered that? And are we comfortable with the hundred foot? Because if it's farther than a hundred feet, it falls into the other qualifications with regard to the acreage and the size. So that addresses his issue.
I would, I would say this, Daniel, just really quickly, 'cause typical right-of-ways, so there is a concept out there of some additional frontage road, or something somewhat similar to what you're seeing on some of the pictures next to Thanksgiving Point. Those right-of-ways typically, if, if a hundred foot may not be enough to get the full right-of-way in there, and then stick the sign next to that road. And so I, I would recommend that we consider maybe even a hundred and fifty feet as the maximum. Still gives us the corridor, but right at a hundred feet, you may have some signs that need to be a hundred and twenty-five feet. And then we've gotta come back and say, well, you can't fit within our zone for these signs. It doesn't work, 'cause it's outside of the hundred foot. I think if you were within the hundred and fifty foot, you would be able to accommodate any type of road that would go along the freeway potentially. Right now, we don't have a concept of anything other than some UDOT frontage roads that they're contemplating. But anyways, I, we may wanna consider that one change if that's possible to make in the recommendation, so.
I'm so glad I have Martina in my team. Really, thank you so much. For sure, we can consider that. When, when I was drafting this, I called from the edge of the control highway, highway right-of-way. But a hundred and fifty would give us a little more, more room. Yes, that, that'll be great for me, and the applicant as well, I'm pretty sure.
Is there any, Daniel, does that limit you at all in what you're trying to accomplish? It still accomplishes the same goal?
It's something I think gives us room for future developments, like the one on the south, to eventually have that, that wiggle room to work with it.
Okay.
Yes.
So is that something you're gonna have to make a change and come back with?
No.
Make that change in the motion tonight. You're just, you have the power to amend the ordinance tonight in your motion, if you wanna change it.
Thank you.
So we're doing, as a, as a third, number three condition of approval, or something like that?
No, just in the motion, just say.
Amending the.
Amending the one hundred feet to whatever you decide you want it to be, and then the other conditions as he's outlined them.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address this subject? From the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion?
Daniel, just procedurally, could you explain to us, Daniel, how this was handled at the planning commission level, if it went to the planning commission?
Yes, yes, for sure. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. So it went to planning commission on last Thursday, last Thursday, and at the time when they voted, have everyone voting yes, and one person voted no. I was interested to see why he voted no. So I had a meeting with him the next day, just to know his perspective. So I wanna know what was the, the part. He didn't have to, he didn't express it at the planning commission. So he came and talked to me, and we had a conversation. And once he didn't understand the part that the areas, the other areas that we saw that you asked me here, that were gonna be part of it. He wanted to be part of it. And I explained to them that, yes, that was taken into consideration. Then he expressed that he would have liked to change his vote. Otherwise, we would have a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Was there a discussion on the distance?
No.
I don't think so. They recommend to the counsel what the change, you know, what they think about the ordinance. There was no discussion on that particular point. We're, we're okay to make that change. Counsel, you, do you have a number in mind? Does one fifty sound like the right number?
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Okay, so whoever makes the motion, if you could include that amendment?
Do we wanna hear from the applicant at all, or does the applicant have anything?
I asked him in the beginning, and he said no.
All right. They'll make a motion if we're ready for one. Thanks. All right. Straighten me out if I get this wrong, Tina. Counsel, may I move that we adopt ordinance twenty seventeen dash forty-one, amending city code chapters ten dash nineteen dash nine freestanding signs, and chapter ten dash nineteen dash fourteen prohibit signs by increasing the maximum allowed area and height for freestanding signs on properties adjacent to I-15 highway, and revising the provisions regarding prohibited signs and various zoning requirements regulating signs in the Grove Zone interchange sub-district, with the amendment that the distance from the freeway be one hundred and fifty feet as opposed to one hundred feet as discussed, and also subject to all final UDOT and engineering and planning requirements.
Sounds good.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Lynn by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric, not here. Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right. Nine B is also a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Pleasant Grove City fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget amendment for the North Utah County Aquifer Council optimization update to the groundwater model for the aquifer in the amount of ten thousand dollars with the funding source, the water fund balance. A copy of the proposed budget amendment is available at the recorder's office. Marty?
Mayor and counsel, this is, you can take that slow-down thing. We're gonna just buzz right through all this stuff, and everything will be great, so. We are members of an association, well, it's actually a council now. We, a number of years ago, we became a member of the North Utah County Aquifer Association. So we called it NUCA, 'cause we love acronyms. And recently, a few months ago, I think it was about three or four months ago, we then changed it to the North Utah County Aquifer Council. So now we're NUCAK. So, so your acronym's for the day. So as part of that council, we have come into agreement with, right now, there are six members of that council, which include Lehigh, American Fork, Highland, Pleasant Grove, Central Utah Water Conservancy District, and Highland. Did I say Highland? Anyways, there's six of us. And we are all members of this council. If you remember back to that agreement, essentially, it's just a working council that we can come in and talk about important things about our aquifer that we all share. We all get water out of this aquifer, and we need to make sure that it's being managed properly. It's, it's really concentrated in North Utah County, and specifically with our neighboring cities. As part of this, a number of years ago, I believe, it was clear back in two thousand four to two thousand and six timeframe, we had an underground water model that was completed, and we became, and that's when this was initially established, the NUCA was established at that point. And then over that time, the, the model was created. We gave all of our well information for how much water we were taking out of the aquifer. Other municipalities were doing the same thing, the location of that, and then they were able to kinda monitor what was happening with, with our groundwater underneath. And so this is very valuable information. But it's, it's very old information, where there's been new wells drilled, there's been more information gathered from that study that needs to be updated. And as part of this council, a big part of that is Utah USGS, United States Geological, Geological Survey are those that, they were hired to create the original groundwater model. And now they, the discussion within the council is that we update that model so it's current, because it's now getting fairly old. And so as part of that, they, they went through, did a study of how much that would cost to update and optimize that model, so that we get more specific information. And that cost was in the one sixty to two hundred thousand, so they were kinda giving us a range. What, what we agreed to was that there, there's kind of a percentage amount that's allocated to the municipalities. So there's a forty percent allocation that was given to USGS. They agreed to pay for forty percent. I believe another thirty percent was agreed to out of Central Utah Water Conservancy District. And then the rest of the cities agreed to split the remaining thirty percent. So the, the item that you're seeing here today is our portion of that, of the municipality, so all of us, other five municipalities, would each pitch in ten thousand dollars to be able to have this study completed by USGS. So that's the item. We needed to get this, this is something that we needed to bring, it wasn't in our budget, and so we needed to bring it forth as a budget amendment out of our water fund. It's, it's to analyze the groundwater, which we draw out of for our culinary water system, so.
Marty, how is the state water engineer, is that the right term? How is their determinations of our water usage affected by this study?
With regards to this, probably not. The state engineer won't get involved in this information. This information may be valuable for us if we're doing a proof, being able to provide information, but really, we're keeping all of our own records with regards to our withdrawal, how much we're taking out of the ground, and what we're, we're kinda monitoring levels of, of that nature. So the state water engineer would get involved if we were trying to prove up on one of our water rights, or, you know, maybe an overdraw from somebody within the aquifer type of thing, but this wouldn't involve the state engineer's office, as far as I understand.
So if we're, if we're drawing water out of the aquifer, and we're participating with six other entities, six other cities?
Five cities, one Central Utah Water Conservancy.
And the district. Is there a recharge program in place?
So, so that was part of the original study. They looked at groundwater recharge. They identified locations in this groundwater model. That's what they were able to do, is they took, that's why USGS, the United States Geological, Geological Survey was involved, is 'cause they were able to go in and kinda look at the overall soils maps, look at the elevations for the soils, and try to figure out where the best possible locations for aquifer recharge would be. And they've done that, and Hanson Allen Lewis did a study, I believe it was in oh-eight, oh-nine timeframe, it may have been in two thousand and twelve, where they identified some prime locations for aquifer recharge, and.
Define that for me. What is a recharge?
So essentially, if you, so let's say you go up to Battle Creek, and you've got the big debris basin.
By the way, and are any of the properties that, any of the aquifers that we're talking about, are they actually located in Pleasant Grove?
The Battle Creek aquifer, so if you go up to the debris basin at the mouth of Battle Creek Canyon, that's one area that was identified as one of the prime locations for aquifer recharge and storage and recovery, is what we call it. So it's an ASR project. It's actually one of the items we'll talk about next with this agreement with Rocky Mountain Power. However, so the idea there is if you.
Counselman Jensen has arrived.
Just for the exciting stuff. I texted him when I got up, so I knew he'd be right here.
We're actually already in aquifers.
Okay, so the idea of an aquifer storage and recovery system would be, if we took the water coming out of Battle Creek and put it into the debris basin up there, and let it sit there, and let it go into the ground, then that water now becomes groundwater, and it filters down through the ground and becomes in the underground aquifer system.
So instead of just letting it go all the way out to the lake, we're actually gonna capture it, let it go down in the ground?
Yes, to some degree. There's, there's a lot of complexities, there's lots of levels. You know, we, we don't draw out of anything that's close in the, in the top aquifers. We're dealing with lower ones, 'cause we don't want contamination. So some of our wells are twelve hundred feet deep compared to the upper aquifer, which might be a couple hundred feet deep. So all of that is all, starting at the mountains, goes down, aquifer begin, the aquifer begins up there and kind of runs into these lower levels. And so aquifer storage would be. And so aquifer storage would be, that would be one location. Dry Creek was another one. The mouth of American Fork Canyon was another one. We've got some porous materials, water's able to get into the ground really fast, and so those are our prime locations, so. So that's, the idea of this is to get the model updated and optimized so that we can identify better as a council, better locations to be able to recharge the groundwater and keep our aquifers healthy and, and something that we can draw out of, out of for years to come, so.
Other questions?
If the other cities, are all, all the cities have to be in agreement on this for it?
Yeah, and, and they all have a choice to do that, so we'd bring something back to you if anything changed, but I, I don't believe we're gonna have any problems with that. Nobody indicated an issue at our last meeting, so.
I don't know, there's some aquifer riots that are happening across the nation. I just didn't know if that was, had moved to Utah yet, or...
Is this a joke? Sorry, I've been out of it for a few days.
No, I think we're good.
It's not as funny as when it's on Mars.
Okay. Any other questions for Marty?
So it's not, it's not mandated by any federal or state requirement that we do this?
No, this is part of this council that said we would like to see this updated so we can better understand what is happening with the groundwater. We obviously are very interested in that. This aquifer is very valuable to us. This is where we get our water. We want to make sure it's clean, and we want to make sure that we have water to pull out of there with all of our water rights, and, and this gives us the opportunity to better manage that if we see issues or problems arising.
Right. Thanks.
Okay, it is a public hearing. Let's open it up for the public. If any of you have questions or comments on this item, please come up and state your name. You have about three minutes. Gosh, you don't show up for a year and a half.
The water guy.
We need more engineers to give us insight.
Uh, just one question. Equal split between cities, was there a, I guess, water usage or water rights consideration taken in regards to the assessment, financial assessment of the study?
Hypothetically, Marty, if we were to consider on the basis of water, would that be more advantageous to Pleasant Grove or less, do you think?
Again, I think we all equally share and draw from the aquifer, so we all have an interest of keeping that. That's why it was kind of looked at as we all, you know, just because somebody has another five acre feet of water than we do, it's probably still equivalent that we all have that same interest. So as a council, and again, we're only talking about $10,000 now. If we're talking a million dollars or something, maybe we would start looking a little bit more closely into how much value that brings to somebody with more water rights compared to us, who, we have a ton of water rights, by the way. I mean, this is something that is very important to us, as well as the other municipalities, we all draw from this, and so, but we all felt that equally we share the same interest in that regardless of whether or not, I mean, we have a lot of shares, they have a lot of shares, so it wasn't worth going into the details of that.
We, we might not want to ask that question because it could end up costing us more.
But I, I didn't specifically look at that. I don't, I don't really know what the other water rights are for the other municipalities. Got enough things to do with here, so.
Sure.
Let's make sure we've got good water, and I think we're looking pretty good on our end.
Hey, would anyone else like to comment on this? From the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and come back up here. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I make the motion that we... Oh.
Oh, that was a...
It's the next thing.
Sorry, I just went off of the menu, I said, okay.
My apology. Let's go to the next item and then call for the motion. Okay, this one's not a public hearing. To consider for adoption a resolution 2017-058, adjusting and amending the actual and anticipated expenditures for fiscal year 2017-18 for the North Utah County Aquifer Council Optimization Update to the water ground, the groundwater model for the aquifer in the amount of $10,000 with the funding source, the water fund balance, and providing for an effective date. Any discussion? All for motion.
Okay, I'm gonna do it. I make the motion to adopt resolution 2017-058, adjusting and amending the actual and anticipated expenditures for fiscal year 2017-18 for the North Utah County Aquifer Council Optimization Update to the groundwater model for the aquifer in the amount of $10,000 with the funding source, the water fund balance, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Sid and a second by Diana by voice, Lynn.
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay. Item 10B is to consider for adoption a resolution 2017-059, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with North Utah County Water Conservancy District and Pacific Corp regarding clarifying property boundary lines and granting mutual access to the parties' respective parcels located at 200 South, 1700 East, Battle Creek Debris Basin, and providing for an effective date. Marty?
I hope it's not too dark, but I think it would be helpful to be able to view this better. Thank you. Um, up at the mouth of Battle Creek, we have some interesting things happening with the property lines, and a number of years ago, sorry, 15 months ago, it feels like a couple of years ago. We got together with some of the interested parties and tried to come up with a plan that would help... I'll get you oriented here in just one second since I can get my mouse on the screen. So if we look at the overall area, so this is the water tanks at the mouth of Battle Creek, and here's the debris basin, if you know where that all is, and then there's Quonis Park and the trail that goes up Battle Creek. Down in this area here, there's, uh, this property here, we obtained just this last year, I'm trying to remember the name of the company, I have it here somewhere. One second. On my screen. Okay, the Lantana's group, they did, they deeded to the city 10 acres. They did it over two different deeds over different years. One was in December of 2015, one was in January of 2016. Those two parcels are, this parcel here, I'll probably have to cancel out of that. So that parcel there is one of them that was deeded to us, and then this parcel here is another parcel that was deeded to us. Now, there's a, there's a lot of different properties up in this area. We've got some land that's owned by Rocky Mountain Power. We've got land that's owned by North Utah County Water Conservancy District, and then land owned by Pleasant Grove, and then there's a couple of private party owners that own some small parcel strips down along this boundary. Some of the things that, that are kind of the issue with this, and I'm gonna turn off, I'm gonna turn on the aerial here. So we've got some pretty good gaps happening between boundaries, so there isn't, there's, the deeds just don't tie. And so there's a dispute between the boundaries of who owns the boundaries, and, and then that happens on many of the parcels up in this area. They're just old deeds, hundreds, sometimes over 100 years old, and, and so we're having a difficult time kind of understanding, okay, this is our property, this is your property. And then North Utah County Water Conservancy District came to Rocky Mountain Power, who actually owns a good majority of the property of the basin, but they have the right to use the basin and manage the basin, but they don't own the property. So there's all of these boundary issues, and so we came together as a group and said, hey, it would be really nice if we could come up with a solution to all of these issues, boundary issues, who owns what. I want to own this area because we've got tanks here. We want to make sure we own all the property where our tanks would be in facilities. Uh, North Utah County has a desire to own the, the embankment because they're supposed to manage that, and Rocky Mountain Power has interest up in that area to maintain their property as well. And so the idea of getting together was to come to a solution of all of the property boundaries. Let's clean them up, let's do the adjustments where needed, and then let's, let's have these agreements placed. So that's what's before you tonight is a memorandum of agreement. There was an issue with being able to proceed on this agreement as a formal agreement, and that's why it's an MOA instead of an actual just agreement and we're moving forward. And that is when we acquired or when we were deeded these properties from Lantana, they indicated that there was a three-year time period that the city couldn't do anything with those, we couldn't divest ourselves of the property, we couldn't adjust the boundaries, and it's probably tax implications for them for the reasoning of that. And so we knew we couldn't do anything, yet we have these other two properties, uh, we have a project that will start in two weeks on the reconstruction, they're modifying some of the dams, the overflows, the spillways, the outlet structures on the Battle Creek Debris Basin, and so they had a desire to kind of get this going. So 15 months ago, we started meeting, and essentially, this is kind of, let me pull up another map now. So this is kind of what it looks like today minus there are gaps that we're not seeing in that. So Rocky Mountain Power owns the red, uh, North Utah County Water Conservancy District owns the blue, Pleasant Grove City owns the green, and then we do have a little bit of a private party that owns a little sliver down here, a triangular piece. Uh, this is the filter station for the pressurization system that sits on this little piece here. So you can kind of see, it's really not very clean and very difficult to understand where things are. We've got facilities that run through multiple properties, uh, and so we're just trying to get that cleaned up. So this was the original start of that, um, and what we came up with, what you have in your agreement, is kind of this revised agreement. And one of the things you'll notice on that is, uh, this was mainly directed by Rocky Mountain Power. They wanted to make sure that there wasn't a loss of property. They didn't mind changing boundaries as long as they maintained the same area. And so we all essentially did that. It's just in a different configuration. So rather than having all of these discontinued parcels and things of that nature, we're all deeding to each other essentially the boundaries that you can see here. The red would be Rocky Mountain Power, the blue would be North Utah County Water Conservancy District, the green would be Pleasant Grove City, and, and then we can move forward. As you can see, there's a little piece right here that's part of that Lantana dedication that was given to us, and, and therefore, we can't move forward on this until 2019. I believe it indicates in the agreement, uh, that this agreement wouldn't be finalized until January of 2019, January 2016th. And, and so the reason why it's important for us to move forward on it now is because North Utah Water Conservancy District is trying to get the basin reconstructed, and they're going through NRCS, another government agency that's saying we need to have these agreements finalized between all these parties so that we can move forward. And so we are trying to get, we've been working together to come up with this memorandum of understanding so that they can move forward on getting the, the dam reconstructed, and so.
So does the basin end up completely on Pleasant Grove property, then?
Abs, no, we don't have any part of the basin on our property. The green is our property, the blue would be North Utah County, uh, North Utah County Water Conservancy District. You can see, though, that they would own all of the dam, and right now, they don't. Rocky Mountain Power actually comes down through here. Anyway, so it really just clears up that Rocky Mountain Power owns in the basin, North Utah County owns the dam, and then Pleasant Grove City. And some of the critical things here that I should just point out is there, in this memorandum of understanding or of agreement, they do have two power lines that cross through this property, and we are agreeing to dedicate easements for those lines. They already exist there, it's just a formality of saying, okay, we understand that these are the overhead power lines, and, and this is where the easements will be. There's also a need to be able to have access back through here, so they currently have access to a small parcel, but we're all agreeing that this is going to be the location of the access easement for all three parties, both Pleasant Grove, North Utah County, and Rocky Mountain Power. Through that, there's also a power easement, so at some point, there has been, I guess, conceptualized a need for a, a substation up here next, next to these big power lines. So they've kind of identified an area, and they need to have access to that area as well as getting power from that location down to 200 South. So this red line that you're seeing here is an access easement as well as a power easement. So we've kind of just, kind of went through and said, okay, what does everybody need to accomplish here? Have all of our interests been met? And, and do we clear up the boundary issues? And that's what I feel like we've accomplished here, which has not been easy. It's been a lot of meetings over a long time, but I feel like this is, this is good, in, in our best interest to be able to clear all this up so we know exactly where our property is, so.
Good work.
Was there anything else that you had to add on that?
No, I was just gonna advise the council just to make it clear that this memorandum of agreement is just an agreement to actually sign the quitclaim deeds and grant the easements in 2019. So nothing's actually changing hands with this. This is just an outline and an agreement to do something in 2019.
Okay.
We wanted to tie up everything and make sure that everyone understood what was going to happen, but we can't actually transfer title till then.
But work will take place in the meantime? Okay.
And one other thing, we did talk about aquifer storage and recovery, and we've identified the basin as a prime location for that. We don't own that property, so we wanted to make sure that we had the right to do that. So that agreement addresses this as well, that we would be able to work with them to create a facility that would work for us and, and possibly others as well, which is, is a great thing for us to be able to have as well, so.
Great.
That's in that agreement as well.
Okay, any questions for Marty?
Yeah, so as we clarify these boundary lines, I don't know if you've said this and I missed it, but do we have a net gain or a net loss of land?
Turn off that light real quick and I'll zoom in.
Look on the left-hand corner of your map.
Totally.
So the one thing here, so you can look at these, and there's, again, there's lots of gaps in between here. Essentially, here, we got 15.53, um, the existing is 15.12. We're actually gaining a little bit above what we currently have. That's due to, um, a, a good portion of, half of that gain is due to trying to acquire this little, um, there's a private parcel that exists right here that's owned by somebody that I believe picked it up in a tax cell. It's all encumbered by utility easements, access agreements, things of that nature, and so, um, that includes that. But overall, the goal was to try to make us equal to what we currently have today, and, and that's what we tried to accomplish here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion. Counsel, may I remove that we adopt ordinance, or resolution 2017-059, authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with North Utah County Water Conservancy District and Pacific Corp regarding clarifying property boundary lines and granting mutual access to the parties' respective parcels located at 200 South, 1700 East, Battle Creek Debris Basin, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have two seconds. I'll take Lynn on this one. Okay, by voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay, item 10C is to consider for adoption a resolution 2017... Did we need to specifically state what you, that this is?
No.
Okay. Um, okay. To consider for adoption a resolution 2017-060, authorizing the mayor to sign a grant of easement in favor of Pleasant Grove City from Grantor Valley Grove 2 LLC for a relocated perpetual storm drain easement on Grantor's property located in the Grove area located at approximately 1975 West Pleasant Grove Boulevard, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and Counsel, a number of months ago, we vacated a number, a couple of easements that were granted to us with the North Utah County Boulevard, um, project. They were, they were easements through private property, and I need to figure out, there we go. So this area here, there is an old ditch that we discharged to, and it comes down through the property here. This is St. John's property, this is owned by the Hammond's Group, and it comes down to a crossing on I-15 that's located here, and, and that ditch currently is kind of going right through the middle of that property. So there was a desire to vacate those easements and provide easements elsewhere. And so we went through the process, we're working, UDOT owns, owned one of the easements. There were, I believe, four easements there. We're vacating three, we've already approved that, but as part of that vacation, if you remember, we indicated there were a certain number of things that the developer needed to accomplish before we would vacate. One of those things is to record a new easement that would be in place of the vacation of those, so we didn't want to just release that and not have another easement along the boundary. And so we also indicated that they needed to install the improvements that relocated the ditch into that easement, and so, and that had to be finalized. So that has now been done, and the pipeline that was originally coming through the middle of that property has been relocated to the boundary of the property, and now comes down to here, crosses through this channel here, this open channel, and then goes through a culvert that's under this road that's currently under construction here, and back into the original channel. So, um, this easement, before you deny it, is being proposed so that we can get the right to take our water through this easement. This also has commingled water with UDOT. All of the water from North Utah County comes down through this corridor, so water from... All of the water from North Utah County comes down through this corridor, so water from UDOT's property as well as private property, as well as city property, so there's a commingling of a lot of water here. It's a fairly large line, I believe it was a 36-inch pipe that was installed there, and, and then it just dumps into here. And so, right now, what you'll, what is before you is to approve this easement that essentially takes that water down along the Boulevard, along this new valley way, and to this location where it discharges across, so that's...
That's not gonna be under the road, it'll be under like a sidewalk or something, or...
So, so this portion here, at some point, as we're currently under discussions about widening Pleasant Grove Boulevard with UDOT, UDOT owns Pleasant Grove Boulevard in this area, there would be maybe a portion of it that might end up under the improvements, but as you get down into this area, this is an open ditch section, so as, as this property comes in for development, we'll talk about how that gets improved, how it looks. Obviously, they're gonna want something nice, meandering stream type fill, but it's still gonna handle the capacities of what we're anticipating there. So they'll be working that into their site plans, but as of right now, this is piped to this point, it discharges it into an open ditch that's outside of the road, and then crosses through a culvert under the road at this location here. So I think we've, I'm up with a good plan on that.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a motion.
Make the motion that we adopt resolution 2017-060, authorizing the mayor to sign a grant of easement in favor of Pleasant Grove City from Grand Tor Valley Grove II LLC for relocated perpetual storm drain easement on Grand Tor's property located in the Grove area located at approximately 1975 West Pleasant Grove Boulevard, and providing for an effective date.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sid and a second by Eric. By voice, Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous. Okay. We'll look at the November 14th city council meeting agenda. Have we determined at this point that a meeting is not needed?
At this point, we're still...
In between?
At this point, it doesn't look like we'll have another meeting.
Okay.
We still have November 1st, can reserve in case we have a planning or engineering issue come up that needs to be addressed. The 14th, we're still putting that agenda together, but that will likely be a city council meeting and not a work session, we'll need to be taking action that day. So we'll notice it as, as that when we get there.
And then on the 21st, the purpose of that meeting is to canvass the election?
21st will be to canvass the election, yes.
That's a short meeting, there's nothing else?
We're hoping to keep that as the only agenda item, it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so we'd like to be that, have that be brief.
Okay, nothing on the 28th. And then as we look into December, are there any meetings?
Right now, the 5th and the 12th are scheduled.
Okay.
I'm assuming we'll meet the 5th for sure, the 12th will probably depend on agenda items and what's going on.
Okay. So we have one, two, three, four meetings. At a Christmas party, Mayor. At a Christmas party.
For some of us, we keep going in January, so...
Some of us don't.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go on to staff then. Daniel, do you have anything this evening?
No, Mayor, just like to pass the appreciation and thanks from the staff. A lot of residents of Pleasant Grove show up to our office, and they knelt down on dirt and took off weeds and cut off some, some bushes, and they pick up garbage, and the young's team came up and helped a lot, so we're really grateful for that. Also, I won't be in, in the office from, from the 27th till the 7th.
27th of October?
Of October.
Till the 7th of June?
Of...
I mean, December? You'll be gone.
Of, of November.
November, sorry.
Yeah.
Mayor wants to give you a long vacation?
I'll be gone.
We wanted to make sure there were no agenda items, so we sent him on vacation.
Smart move.
No, I was dead of the death.
Also, we had some citizens in a couple of weeks ago to talk about the care of the grounds. I received a call from, I think it was, who called me? Andy called me within a, within a couple of days, and he mentioned how quickly the area had been cleaned, and his family wanted to formally come down and thank everyone. I may not have given him the right date for a meeting, but he said he was gonna come in and, and express appreciation, especially for the quick turnaround that, that your department showed on that, so, thank you.
9:00 AM the next morning.
Okay, Marty?
Just kind of an update on the projects, real quick, Mayor. We've got the water tank, I believe they're pouring the roof on the tank Thursday, and so that's moving forward. As soon as they get that done, we'll be filling it, testing it, doing a leak test on it, make sure it's good to go, and then they'll start backfilling around that as they're constructing the pump station. How we're also working on the power line, the conduits in the ground, and we're working on, you'll see something from Rocky Mountain Power on agreement, well, we've already seen the agreement, but we've got to do an easement for that as well, and so that'll be coming forward. But we've also got, so 900 South is being paved starting tomorrow and Thursday, so we should see a new road there before the weekend's done. 700 South, north side of the road was paved, south side is getting nearer to bringing up the base, so they've got most, probably 90% of it excavated, and then they'll start building up, and they've already done a portion of that. We're planning to get that reconstructed in the next couple of weeks as far as having the pavement down. The north side's beautiful and smooth, probably, Dave could probably attest to that, it's a little bit better than the roads he was driving on a few weeks ago, so hopefully he appreciates that. Chief Thomas, right, you appreciate the road out there?
I need to wake him up.
So eventually, so another couple of weeks here, and he's gonna have a nice, beautiful road, and, and we'll still need to remind him to stop at the railroad tracks, but...
Hey, I got phone calls, people were telling me they were not stopping and that they understood.
So, anyway, so yeah, we're, we're moving along, it's still gonna be a little bit messy for another couple of weeks, but then we'll pull it all together and be finished with that. And a great construction year, we've had a lot of projects, a lot of things moving forward, got a lot of work done, and, and excited about next year's projects getting started, we're already planning those, so.
Thank you, Marty, appreciate that. Okay, Denise, do you have anything? Scott? Tina? David? Dave?
So as part of the Armada of firefighters that went to California. They'll be down there for up to 21 days.
Wow.
California's picking up the tab, and so they're doing good things.
Have you, have you heard from them?
Yeah, they are waiting for an assignment, they went down, they split their task force, and the first half of the task force was assigned today, the second half, which our guys are in, will probably be assigned tomorrow. And they've got fires everywhere, so they've got a lot of protection that they need. And they'll be doing mostly structure protection, they're not really geared to do, they're not dirt scratchers.
Okay.
So they'll be mostly just minding the shop with, with different businesses and in homes and stuff.
Do they take their own equipment, or are we using their equipment?
They took our equipment down. We, we have all of the certifications and the equipment, so they took that with them.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Mike?
Nothing.
Nothing. Sheri?
So a couple days ago, I called Dave in my contacts to ask if the firefighters could come help move some things, because we're doing carpet and paint upstairs in the library. And Dave said, sure, but do you want, is this for home or the, or work? Which I thought was an odd question. And I said, work, of course, I wouldn't ask for home, and he said, well, you could. So, and he said, how many do you need? And I said, well, as many as you can get, and it'll go faster. So I get in the car with my sister later, and she said, I can't believe you got my husband busy on a Friday night. I had called the wrong Dave. So, so I have a really great brother-in-law who agreed to get some guys over to the library to help us. But we also have a great fire chief, because he also agreed to get some guys over to the library, I called, called him later. So we are doing carpet and paint upstairs, the, up upstairs, over the next few days. It's quite an obstacle course right now, so we get to have a little preview of what it's gonna look like, but...
How's the elevator coming?
They are currently three to four weeks behind, but think they can make some of it up, so. It's coming.
Okay.
Oh, and reminder to put Veterans Day on your calendar, November 11th at 11:00.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. David?
I just learned I'm at least third on Sheri's list of days. I have nothing.
Thank you. Ben?
No, just a thank you to staff, Daniel and, and Dave and Scott for the, see, ribbon cutting was a great event, I thought it went really well. Enjoyed being at that.
Lynn?
It was excellent, it was great. Thank you.
Sid? Eric?
Nope.
Diana?
Kathy? Mail-in.
Okay. And it's 100% mail-in, right?
We still have a...
We will have a service.
So in this room?
Well, possibly in the auditorium.
Across the hall? Okay.
Somewhere.
And that's for provisional?
Provisional, and gonna drop off their ballot.
Oh, okay.
And give a sticker. And give a sticker.
Okay. All right. We sign a plats, if you did not sign a plat, there's, right there, there's two of them. Review the calendar, motion to adjourn.
Really quick, thank you, Mrs. Jolly for the bread. Donna? Donna?
Thank you.
Thank you, but also, I, it's a little bit torture of how to smell this for the past hour and a half, right in front of me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Make the motion to adjourn, Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Scott, did you get a chance to...